Yes, sir, please.
But those are positive displacement meters though.
Buddy.
It's either flow, it's either turn or not, though, huh?
It 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 is.
If it's cor- and I I can tell you.
Did they go out and read it or they read it on the meter?
If it's a Coriolis meter, your temperature and pressure really are affected by your flow. Your flow will be different with your temperature.
So, yeah.
With Coriolis meter, but your positive displacement meters, they're.
Yeah.
The Coriolis temperature does affect.
I'm not talking about people with heaters.
Yeah.
But it's like Japanese.
Oh, you guess something.
I did less business this month.
Yeah, there's there's something. There could be something with those meters, huh?
They they went back and checked again, went back and checked again, the meter's working.
Could be something in there.
There's no leaks, you know?
I'm assuming it was a positive displacement meter, because that's what most of your gas meters were. Enough.
Yeah.
Sitting in his chair feels like it's throwing you out.
But you don't. You got gas. Not that much more. Them meters might be different. I was I was thinking they're just positive displacement meters.
Yeah, I'm guessing what it was was. It came just from me because Bo said, hey. I talked to Bo about a few things.
I'll just research on them.
I talked to Vic. Vic said send an email and he'll do something. I sent the email. I guess it came from me and not the council as a whole that.
Damn candy down there by Ustis Albo.
I didn't.
I thought they ate three pieces. We ain't even got started yet.
That's not good.
They've been in the refrigerator too, boy. They good and good.
Yeah.
Gold. I ain't giving no more money. I don't want no more candy.
Don't need to give that up for Lynn anyway.
Price of everything now.
About to say.
Yeah, they use they use eggs, right?
Yeah.
Double. Somebody? Double yolk.
Wow. How you doing?
Double sunny side up, huh?
I'm saving money.
Yeah.
Since I had COVID, I can't eat eggs. It tastes like metal to me. So I haven't eaten eggs in two years.
Well, they're too expensive anyways.
I'm saying, I'm saving money. Saving money, so I don't eat them.
Just put some bad metallic taste in them.
Is Jeffrey coming?
I think I know he's back.
Yeah, he's back.
Jamie, y'all set up over there? You good?
Two of them.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Bay St. Louis City Council meeting. This is the second regular meeting, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. We can all stand for the invocation and pledge. Dear Lord, may every step we take and every move we make lead lead us closer to you. Help us to not work by our feelings, but by your world. Protect us from our own sinful thoughts, words, and actions, and keep our hearts pure and unblemished. Father, always help us to remember that you are always a gift in our lives. And we'll end this on our Father, our Father, who art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those trespassing against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy kingdom, power, and glory forever and ever. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item up tonight, uh, Mr. Reese, have any agenda amendments that we need to place tonight? Next item up on the agenda is the public speaker, so we have Mr. John Rosetti to discuss insurance.
Thank y'all. John Rosetti, Vet Rosetti and Associates here in Bay St. Louis. Um, you have your package in front of you and it's not very mean. Property insurance is going through the group right now. Um, if you look at the package part, uh, which is the auto and the equipment, pretty flat. Uh, we've added some new vehicles. We add some new equipment. Um, the main concern is property insurance. And it's just, it's the worst that I've seen at my twenty-three. So basically what we have is we have our master policy. And it's about twenty-two million in properties. The carriers are increasing the deductibles and increasing the rates. So basically you have a million dollar deductible. And we've been doing the wind deductible buyback the past few years. Um, so the way we have it packaged for you to review and make a decision is we have the package policy with a million dollar deductible. And then we have the buy downs to one from one million to two fifty and one from one million to one hundred.
Question?
Yeah, just now, just like looking through the data, as I just write, it's, I mean, it's not only us, but everybody's seeing the significant increase in in home homeowners insurance as well, right? So, um, we did, we budgeted five hundred fifty thousand. Um, year to date, we've got a balance of three hundred fifty-one thousand, five forty-two out of that five hundred thousand. So media's policy just continued to roll into that, but. Okay. Harbor's got fifteen. Yeah, Harbor's got fifteen. I didn't see any utilities. Or just a hundred fifteen. Okay, I thought that was weird. I just didn't, I didn't, I must have missed it, but.
Do we have to amend the budget? Maybe. Not sure what the total will be on everything.
So with the one forty-four buyback, it's five sixty-nine, six sixty-three oh eight. So we're still, you know, if you got a hundred fifty thousand, you got six hundred fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, including the harbor total. Um, so, you know, we're. Yeah, it's the same and it and that only went up four, a little less than four thousand dollars or right at four thousand dollars from twenty-six thousand to thirty thousand, six twenty-one. So that's the big hitter was the, um, the property insurance, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar increase. Um, for this for the property insurance. Um, again, it's not something we're not hearing from friends and family because they're getting the new bills, you know, insurance bills and.
The one lesson it's been for the city is like last year, we had, I think we had like a thirty-seven percent increase last year. Our renewal being in February. We had this increase, the municipalities that we manage, their increases, double what group, which y'all seen because of the policies came later. The carriers are filling their capacity. Once they fill their capacity, there's not much capacity left. So your increases are big, but they're not as ugly and big as we've seen it up.
Yeah, it's right at two hundred thousand dollar increase from two thousand and twenty. It's two forty-three, then it's basically four twenty-four now. So pretty significant increases.
John, do you have any? I I saw some prior correspondence about the four maintenance buildings that are won't be covered.
If you you flip the last page, Kyle, great question, the last page. So just getting coverage is a challenge. There's about two carriers out there and that's it. So we went the last two or three days, communicate with Mike Russo, and finally got him talked into pick up the session stands and bathrooms. They still do not want to pick up the open air buildings here, the maintenance buildings, and then old metal buildings in the back. If you look at that quote I put behind, they got that to me around four o'clock today. Um, it's like thirty-five ninety-two. That's fire only, the cop. They still do not want to provide wind coverage for that. But that's four hundred forty thousand dollars worth of coverage for the thirty-five ninety-two.
And these are previously covered? No issues? Was these, or has this been a, is this been a stolen issue?
Like I said, I've never seen it this bad. We went through a decade from oh-eight to eighteen. I just brought renewals in here and a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible one time carry. Twenty-five thousand dollars for twenty-five billion dollars of property. And we had a decade of decreasing premiums. And the carriers have basically lost money since two thousand seventeen. So we're going through a hard cycle. These hard cycles don't stay hard. Basically, the expense aside, they come down. Things gotta start. It's got to.
I know you kind of braces for it.
Huh?
I said, I know you kind of braces for it, for this, your last, uh, updates.
Look, we didn't know what we were gonna get.
Yeah.
And we we don't.
Yeah.
We quoted three hundred twenty-five thousand of the day for two point five million, uh, two point five million. The premium was three hundred twenty-five thousand for a condo. Three hundred twenty-five thousand. For two point five million.
No way.
On a twelve point five million. If we couldn't find the other ten million. It's just, it's the worst I've seen.
Wow.
Which is terrible.
Yeah. Good. Got to have insurance. You can't live without. I don't, I guess the only question would be right, we go in it. John gave us two deduct, two questions to buy down for one twenty-three oh seventy-nine or one forty-four, one forty-four six eighty-eight. Um, it talks about a seven year buyback. It's twenty-one thousand dollar difference. Um, so you're talking about three years, you know, buyback on that if you have an event. So you're going from a difference of five oh three to five sixty-nine for your. So really, I think that the Rosetti and vets recommended we go to one forty-four six eighty-eight buy down. With the route that they had suggested.
In your motion, do you want to add the thirty-five hundred for the buildings for the fire coverage?
Thirty-five nine two eighty.
John, I'm sorry, what was that total coverage on those four? Four hundred and forty thousand?
Four forty. Okay, there you go, four forty.
And Kyle, that's another thing too. The carriers are saying, hey, can't build, like I said, all for six thousand dollars per foot. So they have increased the values to replace them, so we don't get hit with the coverage.
I think that's, that's the next item up under the mayor's report. Do you have any other questions for Mr. Rosetti?
No, it's not good.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
No, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the mayor's report.
I think I'd like to have a little bit more time to review this. I think it expires the twenty-sixth. Is that what it said?
When does it expire?
The twenty-sixth.
Of what?
Just like three days from now. That's what I seen in the email earlier.
Was that for all of it? I know that's for the, uh, renewal, for the, for the four maintenance buildings, but that's the totality of the, uh, proposal. Sorry, Mr. Rosetti, can you clarify? So I know the question came up about the potential of trying to review and kind of digest some of these numbers.
I mean, why are we getting it so late? The, I can't pull it on something like this, like.
Gary, the market is terrible. I mean, as far as getting the quotes, we don't get the quotes thirty days. Normally we would get them like twenty-eight, thirty days in advance. This year, as soon as possible, we can get them was like fourteen to ten days prior. It's just, it's the worst I've seen it as far as even getting carriers to give quotes. And then we got to massage it and work it, um, as far as cleaning everything up and whatnot. But we are binding, I've talked to other city attorneys, we're binding coverage with not even having firm rates. That's how difficult it is right now. We got big property schedules, like we're gonna be on it, but we can't give you a firm rate, but we're the only ones gonna insure it. It's the biggest challenge I've ever seen. So, I mean, we're, we will approach fifty, sixty carriers. Give it to them. I mean, it goes out in the email spreadsheet, three different brokers. They approach everybody that will look at writing this insurance. There's only two, maybe three, that will even give a quote or even think about it. Now, since we're in February, we're actually have one carrier. What I gotta do for the other cities, I'm gonna get one carrier, I'll take five million. You know what they want for their five million? They want five hundred thousand. That's what we're seeing. It's that bad now. And then the next carrier would take the next fifteen million, next carrier might take the next ten million for premium quota share. But but Bay St. Louis being in February, we were doing it last year and this year, we got the ones you got carrier. But the other premium rates are much higher, which I'm seeing. Pass was like a hundred and ninety percent. But that was the June renewal. And the capacity was taken up by Velocity and Ambrose.
So I guess to go back to Councilman Alba's concern, just about being able to have a little more time. So the, so I know the, uh, Gen Cap and and the underwriter Lloyd for the four maintenance buildings, that looks like that expires the twenty-sixth. What, when is the expiration date on the rest?
The other policies expire to twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, so it's all the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
You, when you're getting these quotes, so the council, this hasn't been just sitting on the shelf.
I mean, it's been worked daily, including this afternoon. Yeah, I mean, at four o'clock, I got four of the quotes. Um, and I communicate that. They know it. They're screaming, hollering, we're doing everything we can. If it, it puts a black mark on me. I agree with you. I really do. I mean, you got a five hundred some odd thousand dollar budget thing, you really can't review it. But believe me, we work it. Been working this for y'all for twelve years. We know the markets. We know the two or three carriers. And it's just like theirs. And for us getting information includes it, it's like pulling teeth.
It's not like personal insurance. We know that. Well, you can't just shop it everywhere. Once you put it out there, the market's locked. So you can't really get any more prices from somebody. I mean, it is, it is what it is, basically. You just pick your agent and that's what we got. The prices come in where they come in. I see. Like I said, my building went from eight thousand to twenty-eight thousand. So I see it personally too, when my commercial building. All the audits done? All the prop, all the building audits?
Yeah, yeah. And that, that helped a lot because the same carrier and Jamie and Mike, we all jumped on that. I think we had fifty-three, fifty-five items we had to take care of. And they'll, once again, they'll audit again this year inspection. Uh, and I've got, I got policies canceled tomorrow, people on complete audits and stuff like that. I gotta, it, I'm telling you, it is not fun being an agent right now. It's pain. It's very aggravating, but the carriers have been losing money since two thousand seventeen and they're trying to make up for it. Then we won't go through the cycle long.
Um, people listening and other.
Yeah, so what a, what an audit is, like whether it's general liability, whether it's property. If we say we got a building A and it's two millions and it's built, uh, non combustible, fire resistant, sprinkler. But we tell the carrier that, they give us a rate. Carrier's gonna come out, knock on the door, look at it, make sure it is what we told them. Uh, same thing on the liability side, but where it works a comp, you say, you put out there, you're gonna do two million in payroll, et cetera, et cetera. Well, they're gonna audit that. Sure, you did two million or you did two point one or you did one point seven. So, you know, you get return frame or not, but when they do the building inspections, they're actually looking out for our interest. Because like I think we trimmed some limbs around the community center, because like the small stuff that they tell us to do ends up saving us paying a hundred thousand of our deduct or our two hundred fifty thousand. Some of the stuff has been overlooked for years. I think Mike's agree with that. We had been, had, had the inspection thing since it went in. So there's about fifty-three, fifty-five items.
Back and I know you called him out, but Jamie worked that list hard. I appreciate that.
Very hard. And if you go back from oh-eight to two thousand eighteen, soft market, carriers weren't even inspected. They just give you a rate and whatnot. Now they're just doing everything. It's a challenge.
Well, Councilman Alba, I understand your concerns, just as I do to have more time to digest, but I don't know if there's much more to be done up to this point. I think it's kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked over the numbers when I got the policy this afternoon, threw the spreadsheet together. Really the biggest hitters, there's a hundred and thirty-two thousand in property. Everything is much, pretty much same automobile, automobiles. It's, um, four thousand increase, um, and the Marines, a couple thousand, eighteen hundred dollars increase. So really the big hitters, the hundred and thirty-two nine seventy-two for your property. Um, looking, comparing to properties from the last three years, um, yes, everything's continuing to go up. But as far as the numbers, everything, pretty much the packages are same. The buy down, buy ba- buy down is different, um, this year than it was last year. But it is, uh, again, the, the question would be, you got a, it's a twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollar difference between the, the two hundred fifty thousand dollar buy down or a hundred fifty thousand dollar buy down. Um, so if you look at the, the numbers, right, there's, makes sense to go ahead and get the one forty-four. Um, so I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve the new policy to include the, um, outbuildings. But total of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Yeah, I'll have a count, uh, motion by Councilman Seville.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hoffman. Any further discussion?
Nah, just one thing I would, I'm sure some of this is a replacement cost nowadays too. I mean, construction costs and materials that went up so much in the last two years that I'm sure that plays a big role in these renewal rates as construction cost today.
Can I comment?
Yeah. Yes, I think you'll probably see about a two million dollar increase in the building valuation because of inflation. They have to ensure the value to receive the replacement costs.
Yeah. You ready? All right.
Aye.
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 All right.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Rosetti.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Get some better rates next year. Start working on that.
And so just to clarify, Mayor, so on a number of these, we will get a trade-in value on some of these. Beyond repair.
Two hundred on the Glock forty-three, two hundred on the Glock forty-two model.
Yep.
So that, a new one is at five hundred for the seventeens, five hundred for the nineteenth. That's the two nine millimeter model they're purchasing. So they will get a two hundred fifty to a two hundred dollar credit on all of these. It's forty-three total of the, um, new ones and forty-three total, if I'm not mistaken, of the trade-in. So I think. Yeah. So, so the cost is twenty thousand. Twenty thousand, I think everybody's got it. Then you'll have the engraving, again, all that's included. And then you'll have, um, six, eight, and another six. Final, final cost is six thousand nine hundred and one dollars for the forty-three guns after you take off the trade-ins and everything.
With the trade-in, that's the total is that sixty-nine oh one.
Yeah, sixty-nine oh one.
Forty-three brand new guns.
For forty-three new gun. That is correct.
The new guns come with the maga- three magazines.
Yep, three mags on that. And seventeen, nineteen is just preference for some of the offices.
So we need to make two motions, right? The motion, first motion.
Motion is, yes.
Surplus disposal motion of the forty-three Glock pistols.
Making the motion.
A motion by Councilman Seville.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hoffman. Discussion before we vote the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next one would be the motion to accept the lowest and best quote for the new, um, Glock purchasing nine millimeters.
One other comment, just to recognize it is a federally licensed firearm distributor. It's required.
Yeah, he's in here as well. Southern, Southern Connection, please apply.
And that's for a total purchase price after the trade-in of six thousand nine hundred and one dollars and fifty cents.
Correct.
So move.
Motion by, uh, Councilman Reed.
Second.
Same by Councilman Salvo. Discussion before we vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Uh, the next is, um, one entered contract with, um, UniFirst. Cental's contract is expiring. I think if you look on the second page, it's really all we need to look at. This is priced for thirty-eight uniforms for the year is ten thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty cents from UniFirst. Price from Cental would be thirteen thousand, two dollars and eight cents. So it's a, a saving. This is also, um, just for the uniforms and all. Mats will also fall in place. You can see the savings on the mats as well. That has not been put into a quote, but we will just carry that forward as well. I think there's a total of, uh, five, twelve mats we use around City Hall, um, over here as well.
This with the, with UniFirst, Mayor, this locks it in for, is it thirty-six months? Is that what's it?
Yep.
And do we, I'm assuming, once you have somebody that turns over, that's part of the process or termination or resignation is getting the uniforms back?
That is correct. This here, um, we only had, the, the other was a, a rental. Just now, this, this is both leases, these two. Before we had a rental where we paid for them to be cleaned as well. We only had two or three people participate in that. So talk to them and everything. They okay cleaning their own and everything. This is just a lease just for the uniforms and all. They'll do their own cleaning and all. We'll probably look at down the line in a couple of months, maybe come in if they, if a few people has interest in shorts and all. You know, maybe get them some shorts that way and all, also maybe just some T-shirts that way when they, when they are out in, in the warmer weather and all, they, they're, they have a city shirt on and all. You know, we've had a couple of people call before about, you know, they'd had T-shirts on this and that, but didn't have Bay St. Louis on, didn't have a name tag, anything like that, any, anything. So, you know, just, just a concern sometimes to help them be identified as well when they're knocking on doors and all.
And do they replace if one gets, I mean, do they replace them? Or I mean, I guess it would all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd fall under all that as well, the replacements and everything, because it's, it's still a lease, they still responsible. But it's just the fact that, you know, we're, they'll be doing their own cleaning.
They'll pick them up weekly and bring you new ones in.
No, because that, that, that fell into dropping five off and getting two, two back. You know, we've had a lot of problems with that, uh, so. This way here, they're responsible for their own uniforms.
Yeah. Pleasure to counsel. Motion. Uh motion by Councilman Seal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Salvo. Further discussion? With the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next, um Ms. Ann Latrum has stepped down, moved out of town, reason she's not being brought back up for the school board and all. Um again, went through resumes and everything we had just taken there. Uh would like to ratify Ms. Joanna Osborne as a school board member for the next, for the, her role in this. Uh the new one takes over this month and that's what's the holdup, last couple of months to just wait till now and all, so.
This will be a full term then?
This will be a full term.
Did you receive a lot of interest, Mayor, on the, the applications?
What's that?
Did you receive a lot of interest, a lot of number?
We did. We had a bunch that we carried over that was interested a y- you know, a year ago and everything. And there really was, there was a lot of interest and all, um, you know, a lot of good people.
So Ms. Latrum is stepping down, um is it in the middle of her term or is that the end?
This is the end of her term.
Okay.
And, and again, she moved to Diamond Head and for this position, you have to live in the school district.
Motion?
Second.
Uh motion by Councilman Seal, second by Councilman DeSalvo. Further discussion? With the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other one was added late, appreciating everything. Uh what this is, is there's interest of joining the downtown Main Street Association. Oh, well, not downtown, but the main street, Mississippi Main Street. Um I know Mike's been working on it and he's got more information, but he worked on it through Diamond Head. Uh and what this is, the first part of it is we can get in, I think it's five hundred. An associate and all. And Nikki Moon has asked, you know, she has shown a lot of interest in this. Um to gather information and bring back to the city and all. And, you know, if, if we choose, we can, would like to send her and pay for the hotel room while she's up there one night.
Yeah, and I, I more than appreciate Ms. Moon, her interest in trying to get this revitalized. I mean, I think this is a great opportunity. I'm really thankful that she's spearheading that. I just kinda questioned us, you know, funding a private individual for a private entity and, and, you know, is this not something that, say, some of the, the merchants down, you know, down Main Street could fund? Or partner with the chamber. I know it's not directly rated with the chamber, but it helps spur that business too. So I just kinda questioned if that's something that we, the council feel like would be more appropriate than using taxpayer funds for it. And I know it is by statute. I think Mr. Reese who had sent some information that it, there's by statute, this is one of the entities that the municipality um could fund. I guess I would question next where this fund, where this would come from, you know, we didn't really necessarily budget for it. I just wanted to throw that out there, if this would be more appropriate to where some of those merchants could get, could pitch in or some of that association or even the chamber.
And just from, just from my history, and they've actually changed their processes over the last really twelve months. Mainly because there was some significant grant money that went to the main street org- designated Main Street organizations from the state legislature last year. And they were just overwhelmed with people trying to get in, obviously for that money. Um so they've kinda changed their processes a little bit. And so they've kinda created what they call a pathway to designation or uh become a designated Main Street affiliate. Then only the cities become associated and that kind of opens the door, allows you to go for training and other opportunities. But then you start working with them if, and some cities never move beyond an associate, okay, to go into what they call network and then designated. But the, the network is basically a two-year process to get your ducks in a row and get your bylaws and five oh one C three set up. And that's when you're kinda really shifting to a nonprofit that takes over. But a lot of cities just stay in this associate just to have access to training and the resources. Nikki approached us and said, hey, we should try to re- bring this back. And so the mayor and her kinda talking, she sent us an email, I think it was yesterday or day before, and said, hey, there's a training next week, which they do once a year. Which is basically a workshop that's free on how do you become a designated, so ki- kinda goes over that pathway. So kinda said hotel expense and travel would be approximately a hundred fifty or so. So just kinda looking through it this afternoon and looking, what's the cleanest way to kinda do that? Have her go as our representative to come back and report, you know, obviously it's a council decision, is this something I wanna do or not? But, you know.
Well, I, I kinda have reservations for opening up that door.
Yeah.
You know, cause you start doing this and you're gonna do others. And uh, you know, I'm just, you know, I've never seen this since the time I've been on the council where we funded a private individual to go look at, do something like this.
We haven't.
Yeah. I mean, is it, is it state, can you, is it legal for us to spend the money for that for a citizen?
So what you'd really be doing is contracting with her as an independent contractor and paying her a hundred and fifty bucks. We all know that that's to cover her expense, but you would just contract with her as the representative for the city to go up, attend the conference and then come back and report to you guys. Hey, this is what we learned, these are the benefits, this is what it can be, you know, this is what can be done.
Back in the day, the city did the same exact thing with, with uh construction workers on the properties. They would give them the equipment and the, the uh materials needed and the manpower, they would get the manpower and get paid a fee for doing like contract labor. Doing big Frankwiches administration.
I guess my question is, is this gonna be in confliction with the organization on Main Street currently? Or I know that's just a group of business owners, I guess, that formed that, I mean, is.
Can't they fund it?
I'm guessing it's gonna be a different, different direction, I guess.
It would be different than now now.
Association versus.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Into, through a process, I think you'd see those, one becomes the other.
We had, we had this program before and it fell flat and then the business owner association picked up some and I think there was two separate groups at one time.
They were separate back then Doug?
Yeah.
I remember we had it.
Yeah, I wanna say we had it and it's, it went by way and that's why the new merchants group came up and there was some, yeah.
I guess.
Not blood, but it was just two different groups competing for the same territory.
I guess it's all volunteerism and most of it, I mean, yeah, so.
It's always good to.
In the trainings I've been to for them, I mean, they expressed, in order for a main street to be really successful, you've gotta get the grassroots, you've gotta get the merchants to get behind it. And that's what your golf ports, your laurels and Biloxi's all do. Both Gulfport and Biloxi fund a person on their staff. And they have an interlo- at least not a lo- local agreement, but an agreement between Main Street, like Biloxi Main Street and the city. That they're gonna provide the executive director in space. And I'm not saying this is what, this should do, I'm saying what other cities have done, you know, but, you know. Uh I lost my shit, I thought for a second, but.
I get.
It depends what you, what y'all wanna do, but, you know.
Safe form.
There is extremely good training that comes, I mean, up, some of the best workshops I've been to, we're, you know, so if you ever just say, just even sends per- city staff to it, it's beneficial. Compared to just the merch association floating out there by themselves.
Yeah.
I mean.
March third that Nikki has requested to go to is on the application process. So it's able to, to figure out what is needed to become this, what, cause I think right now it's not necessarily known. I don't think we have enough information about it to decide whether, you know, it's something.
I don't know what's available, you know, as far as grants. I know there's a lot of money out there. That was passed down to the state that where grants is available with this. Um I don't know the process into that or anything. Um again, this was a long time ago. I guess before Katrina Doug, maybe Jeffrey, whatever, I don't know. It's been a pretty good while back when we had the Main Street.
Right.
Again, it's something we'll move forward on. Couldn't say definitely, you know, a yes or a no. I think it's, it is worth getting the information and finding out, especially if there's grant money and all available, that, that's a possibility to help on things. But again.
Get involved in this of, of what you do, um, membership do you start at a certain price and then the longer you're in it, the more they go down. And then each group has a um list of benefits that, all of this, I'm just looking at their website. That is available um for that segment if you wanna, like, what are they? Oh, like designated community is one, network community is another, associate members, what Reese I was talking about a minute ago. And each of them will tell you what the benefits are of being that level.
I mean, you know, it's a hundred, it is a hundred fifty dollars, but like, I think it's the precedent, right?
Yeah.
But you can, again, I think, uh, I asked about that earlier, is, is it legal, right? And if you can do a, a contract with someone to, I guess, get in, enter the contract and pay their lodging. I, I really don't know where I'm, where I'm at on this, quite honestly, cause it's, you wanna start something to continue to grow and make things better, right? Um if you have a grassroots, I know, I, before last time, trying to remember, there was a, a lot of issues between the two groups.
That's what was down there.
Yeah, right? So it's, I'm gonna bring this new program in, well, I already got my program, why do I want me to part of your program and then you start this?
Yeah, it's gotta be a benefit.
It's gotta be a benefit, right? And how, we, you know, as the business owners, all grab onto it and say, this is what we're gonna do. We're not, you know, we're gonna bylaws and guidelines for the Main Street Association, not of our local group, Main Street group. You know, so what is, uh, what is their feeling about it, right?
No matter what, you know, if we stay downtown, whatever, you know, or go Main Street, it's gotta have full support of that.
Right.
Uh of it, from everyone down there. If not, it's not gonna.
Right. And so is there, is there an emphasis on moving in this direction? Or is it just like, no, we got our own thing, we wanna stay doing what I, I don't know that.
Yeah. And I just kinda worry that, you know, if there is a different association currently, if y'all understand correctly. So then we're gonna donate for the other association that with taxpayer funds. So then I just think that creates that, we're taking one side approach, you know, I guess.
Yeah, again, I, I'm conflicted, quite honestly, what, what direction to go, quite honestly. I wish we had more time to talk to the businesses to find out if, you know, if there was a ground well of support for the businesses to, yes, we, this would help us and we would all.
Big difference, I guess, would be grant opportunities with this organization being part of a city.
Downtown Merchants Association, that's an association for the merchants to, to get together and collaborate. And do marketing events and, I mean, from, from looking at the Mississippi Main Street, that's not, this is more of a economic development type driver, a grant opportunity. Um, you know, I don't think their missions are, I don't think they'd be competing organizations.
And under the statute, I mean, we're, we're allowed to do.
You're allowed to, to donate to the main street. This, the, the sticky one here is the fact that Nikki is not a city employee, so.
Well, it says we're allowed to, at our discretion, execute contracts agreements with, in order to appropriate contribute and donate or expend budgeted funds for local development organizations and designated Main Street programs. This would be a designated Main Street program and then if we wanted to go further and join this program, we, we could, but.
You could. But that's what, it's, that's why my recommendation, if you, it, it wouldn't be to reimburse Nikki for a hotel room. It would just be to have Nikki as your independent contractor going to do that.
For a fee of one hundred fifty thousand.
Hundred fifty bucks, yeah.
Just cause we're allowed to, doesn't mean it's a specific responsible thing to do.
Granted, if you wanted to send, you know, if it was a city employee, I don't even think you'd have to have this conversation. I think the mayor could send any one of his employees to go, go up there if, you know, that's what we chose to do.
One comment I would make, kinda going back to Doug, I don't think you should feel pressured. Yeah, this meeting, they have once a year, is next Friday, it doesn't mean we have to go.
Right.
You know, it was brought to our attention. Do we wanna go? Do we not wanna go? I think it's a great opportunity to explore entry over this next year process. That's kinda what I've kinda communicated, as y'all do your comprehensive plan. And see if from that grassroots, does it come out that, that, that's what your community would like to see and that's what your business community would like to see. You know, so I don't, you know, feel like there should be pressure, you know.
No, it's just.
You know, it's, it's an opportunity. If you wanna do it, you don't wanna do it, like, you know.
I just, I'll, I'll give a hundred and fifty dollars personally for her to go, cause I think it's a, might be a benefit. So I'll just pay for it. Don't you donate through the city or can I just give it to her or what? I mean, I'll pay for it.
I would just.
I would just give it to her.
Huh, okay. Oh, I'll take care of it then. All right, I'll check. I think it's valuable. Uh, Main Street puts, that area downtown puts a lot of money in the city coffers through sales tax and, and it's doing great on its own. But could we do something to add more? Could we get grant money for beautification down there and do things? Or if we can get beautification money and do a lot more downtown, it'd be even better.
So you have a, you have a national Main Street America, basically. And that's where some of your, there's a, an annual convention for it. You have the state with, does like a tri-state conference, you know, so there's training, there's a bunch of other different stuff that they do. And I think monthly, there's like workshops that the directors can go to. The current organization doesn't have that back, that backbone, you know.
And then what I can gather from it, the, the Mississippi Main Street organization promotes itself. So if you go to their website, like if you click on, for example, Biloxi, um, it has all of Biloxi's information, including all of their activities that, that they have with direct links and emails to Biloxi's website, social media, email. So it's, it's definitely a marketing and more of a state, statewide approach to, to things.
Yeah, I'm good with that though.
Personally, I would also just like to, I think for it to work over time, if that's where the city said to go, I say city, meaning Bay St. Louis as a whole. You probably would see a merge. You would probably only see one organization.
Well, if they could.
But, I mean, it would.
The biggest problem is. The biggest problem is people.
Yeah.
That's the biggest problem. You get football leagues split apart, baseball leagues split apart, cause you get coaches and personalities that can't get along. Probably would happen there years ago, if I had to take a guess. I mean, it's just people with different opinions and different visions and they just go different ways.
Saw BP funds fund Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
You probably had lack of leadership.
Yeah.
At the time, you know, and it died.
And I mean, this is so close, I really just pay for it, let her go, so we can get it, cause the plan is coming out.
We'll have information anyway.
Yeah, we got the information and if we move forward with it, we can have time to study it.
To downtown, to, to say, hey, this is what it can do. Do we wanna move forward with the thoughts, you know, and start putting, again, the comprehensive plan coming as well. Can go hand in hand working with that to get thoughts in as well, you know, and, and, and all.
But this, I mean, to be a designated, you're looking at a multi-year process. Or you just do like some of these other cities and you stay an associate and just go to the trainings, go to the workshops and, and knock yourself out.
You can still get grants as associate, you gotta move up to the next level.
You won't get, you can't access some of the grant money and some of the other benefits. So again, you can go to the website and look at them, like we were just saying.
So I guess how we leave it, Councilman Salvo, thank you for the generous.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Opportunity to, to fund that part.
Little help on that.
Thank you.
Josh, you want me to split it with?
No, I'm good.
You good?
Get some money with it.
I'm tripping candy money for you.
Uh moving on, the agenda is uh council business. So we had uh Councilman DeSalvo.
Oh, yeah, um, I've heard a few people ask about getting center lines on Legan and Central just cause during storm season, if we get a high tide or something that crosses the road, it's hard to see the, the roads back there. And I was speaking with Bo about the census area from the county and he asked me to send a request to Vic, but um they wanted actually to come from the council, not from me. So um I just asked that if we can get a motion to submit a request to Hancock County Board of Supervisors to stripe Legan and Central Avenue with the center line. And um forward down over to them for their next meeting, I guess.
That wasn't included when we repaved it?
The county, we actually bought paint and they did stripe it, but it's done wore off. That was from the twenty sixteen bond.
That was after the first bond.
This was the first bond when they did it.
That wasn't paved just in this bond here.
Mm-mm, no, so.
But it was done by the county.
Yes, mm-hmm, when they first got that truck, I think, the strapping truck.
There's a motion.
Yeah, yeah. Motion, Councilman Salvo. Motion by Councilman DeSalvo.
Second.
Second by Councilman Seal. Any discussion? With the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
All right. That's all we got on new business. Any other council business? Councilman Salvo?
Um, no, I'm good.
Councilman Nubat?
I'm good.
Uh, a couple of things. Um, I asked about some stop signs, compliance, like Mr. Kenishi's working on getting reports on each stop sign that was installed throughout the city. Um, there's a lot, a lot to do that there instead of just putting up stop signs. So once we get all the reports, we can figure out where we at. Um, not compliant. Huh? Yeah, I know, right? It's so it's, yeah, it's a lot of, yeah, it's a lot of work to do to be compliant with. Yeah, I know, right, it's, so it's, yeah, it's a lot of, yeah, it's a lot of work to do, to be compliant with the laws.
That's.
Yeah, and, and this isn't about reducing speed, this is a safety issue, in these intersections and everything.
But you still have to have data, you gotta have three work, three years worth of data, and we don't have data for that, so, it just.
I think anytime you can stop an accident and prevent, it gives you all the right to do what you want.
It don't tell you that, though. That's what M, MDOT would tell you, they don't put up traffic lights to prevent accidents, they don't put traffic lights up where accident counts.
We're not MDOT.
I know, but we, but you have to follow their rules.
They just don't do that, MDOT also says, it's not theirs once it leaves the road, but when water puddles on the, on the side of the road, and ends up in the road, it is their responsibility.
I know, I agree, but yeah.
But they still don't do it.
There's, there's rules we gotta follow.
I think anytime we have an opportunity to prevent an accident, I think we need to take that.
A hundred percent agree, but do, do you prevent a cause? That's the question.
Do what?
Do you prevent an accident or cause an accident?
Well, you cause it because of stupidity, I believe all accidents, I believe all accidents are preventable.
They're not.
They are, tell me something that's not.
They're not, human, human nature's, eh, yeah.
It's still preventable.
Yeah, okay, I, I know, I do industrial acc- accidents a lot, and that's.
All accidents are preventable, see, somebody being stupid over there, somebody being stupid, it's still preventable.
Oh, I agree. Yep, so as long as we got the documentation, the city engineer says the stop signs are legal and he approves them, we're fine. That's all we need.
And if they're not, what's the next step?
They gotta take them up, so.
Which ones?
All the ones that's been installed, the new ones, and, and again, I was looking at it.
Someone took one out over there on.
Yeah, they must've put it by the parking lot, somebody must've rolled over it.
I knew that one was gonna.
I know, I know.
Yeah, that's the one they think, rethinking.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh.
Just because of location.
It's just a bad, it's just hard, you know.
Or we put some ballots around it.
Put a bumper on it so it comes back up.
Spring loaded.
Yeah, or put ballots around it, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, we just need to make sure that.
But again, you know, thought was, you know, a lot of thoughts are that this is to, to reduce speed, it's not just about speed. It's more of the intersection to, to prevent accidents.
Yeah, but.
And I do believe all accidents are preventable, I cannot think of one that's not besides an act of God, and that's not an accident.
Well, I mean, I'd be curious to, and, as well, kinda what the MDOT, what they recommend in terms of a pre and post volume. I mean, if, if part of a byproduct is diverting where there's an area where there's a large stretch without a stop sign, and that's being utilized to divert, to divert from the highway.
Right.
And they're going highway speed on a road, and then what that pre and post volume is, I mean, that, that has the potential to, again, not the main deterrent, but as a byproduct of, of, of safety, of diverting that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a specific guideline checklist to go through, I mean, they give you traffic count numbers, they give you specific idea, you know, if you have three, uh, three accidents in the last three years, it's part of the data. Um, traffic count's part of the data, line of sight's part of the data, I mean, it's a very, Mr. Kanishi has a form to fill out for each one, it says, yes, these are approved because they meet the criteria for a stop sign.
I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, I, I can send it to you, we got, pulled out the reports, but, I'm looking at, cause it's, it is a lot more than just, and, and I understand the reason why, but. Um, we just need to make sure we're compliant, cause if we're not compliant, somebody has an accident, and we're not following the law, then we are liable to that accident. Um, just wanna make sure we're covered, and the city engineer says they're good, um, I'm a hundred percent okay with them, cause it, it don't bother me. Um, Esplanade Highland Culvert repairs, um, they're, um, Mr. Ronnie Vanny was looking at trying to get some of those done, and then looking at trying to do a project, um. You know, I went in conjunction with buyer sidewalk project, um, I don't know where to go with that, we still had some bond money left over that, um, we didn't spend in Ward one. Um, you know, is it, can you, I don't know what the best project, best way to do this, can we, the city go out? I don't wanna bypass Ms. Kanishi, but we're putting all these engineering fees on top of a little bit of money we have, and you can't get a whole lot done. Can we just, the city hire a contractor, give them a, a scope of work, say go change out fifty-two culverts on Highland Esplanade Drive and mark them, and they go do it, and we pay them? I mean, it's, it's twelve, eighteen inch, fifteen inch culverts, it's not a lot of grade slope, it's pretty flat dang gum property, right?
Straight up, if it's over a hundred, a hundred twenty-five, have to look, you, you have to have an engineer by state law.
It's over. Hundred. Right. Right, right.
If it, if it's under that, I mean, even if it's over fifty, you have to have a licensed contractor, no matter what, so.
I mean, it's not, it's nothing major to do, it's just some busted up culverts and driveways, right, so it's.
Man, except we got some in work.
Ranch is, is wet, you need to start on ranch, coming around right there from Athletic Canal, and work its way on down.
So.
If we can do some in-house, and I don't know how to, best way to do it, but we do have.
I will check with Ronnie and see where he's at.
Yeah, he's, he did a lot of surveying on it, and kinda had an idea, and then he said he got pulled back, cause he wanted to make it part of a project, and how long have we been waiting for buyer? No, so, I'd rather not go down that road. You know, if we can do it in, you know, hire contractors, say change out X amount of culverts and sidewalks or, or driveways, it's just driveways and culverts, basically. So I'd like to see if we can move forward, get a price on that. That's it, thank you.
And just to piggyback on that, I know Ronnie has been doing some assessments in various areas, and there in that Ward four, some of the, what, near Victoria, uh, Seventh, Eighth Street, that area too, um, yeah. But I think he's got a lot of those on the books, or he should have a lot of that assessment.
Yeah, he's got a lot of it done.
Uh, property, maybe we just get a, a follow-up, I think it was on Ballantyne two twenty-nine, it was just some, just something that we can maybe get our, um, code enforcement officer to take a look at, um. It, a couple of weeks ago, it just had some, had just trash and things thrown in the yard, no, it was not, it, that was a different, I think that was Washington. Yeah, yeah. Two twenty-nine, it, it has a grandfathered in FEMA, I think it's a FEMA cottage there, but there just some trash and things thrown about in the yard, had some complaints, if we can just get a follow-up there. Yeah, I think it's been submitted, I just, I don't, I did, I had a constituent call, I didn't have an update to give him, so, yeah, alright, that's all I've got, that's been all. Oh, on the, over that breeding, okay, alright, appreciate y'all getting that. Did we, did we get that, or was it the, uh? We ended, okay, okay. Yeah. And I figured, I mean, I guess, I don't know, I guess that would exceed the, the linear feet from, from Coastal, yeah, so, yeah. But it was a, technically it was a homeowner, I think, that did all that trimming, but, but I appreciate y'all getting that done. Yeah. 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 There's.
People put it in your yard, if you put it in that vacant lot, they're not even looking for it.
So, there is one that, and this keeps coming up, and I, I, yeah, that was a, yeah, so. So one on Third, it, it looks like someone's just dumping in a vacant lot, but it actually is somebody's pro. No, no, so it's, um, it's actually a resident that lives on the beach, but it goes all the way to Third, so that's the back of his property. But I think when Coastal's probably going by it, they're thinking that's just somebody dumping, but it actually is, I, I witnessed that in. They've gotten it before, it, it, there was one about a month and a half, and then I just noticed there's another one there, but I did, I witnessed the individual that lives that, there, that is his property, I did ask him, I said, it, it is, so.
They probably just need, I would recommend that they contact Coastal themselves to tell Coastal that it's adjoining, cause there's no way for them to do that. And once the driver on the route knows, they'll, they'll know to grab it, but without them knowing that, because their, their, um, link and the spreadsheet and everything that they have is gonna link it to Beach Boulevard and not that.
Right, I'll, I'll let him know about that, yeah. Yes, yeah, that's it, right in front, right in front of the condos. But it is legal, and I, I was worried that people are just dumping there, but it's actually.
And that's what most of it is.
Yeah.
And again, I think it's part of just, uh, still commun, I guess, training the community that on, if you've got a debris pile, you know, through, uh, the CES website, phone number. Email, you can submit your request for them to come, and they'll know your, they'll target your house to come pick up your debris pile.
Yeah. Alright, yeah, appreciate it, that's all, yeah, that's been awesome.
So I was, um, Jason, are we, uh, any closer to getting the crosswalks and rumble stripes, uh, put down over on, on Main Street? Um, that we've talked about several times, I've noticed some striping going on around Old Town, didn't know if that was part of it. Okay, I thought we had already budgeted for it. I, I thought during the street striping, we were gonna at least put one crosswalk in there with.
Now, they're gonna be the crosswalks at the intersection.
Yeah, the, this was like midway up or, or a third of the way up, and then two-thirds of the way up, that first block of Main Street.
We do have one going across from the handy bank machine, across right there, yeah, crossing Main Street.
Mhm, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, crossing Main.
Yeah, yeah, that's in, that's in, that's in this.
Okay.
Yes.
No, no, Main Street, I, I said beach, I apologize.
That's right, that's included in, in, in their striping when they do it.
Okay.
I think it's laid out maybe up there marked, I know a lot of it is marked.
Yeah, I know they've been marking all over this, but I.
And that'll also be a, on that side of, um, an unloading area as well. And then when we do the beachfront, we can hopefully get some areas up there, and I'll, we maybe just signage on that to, to create. I don't know, seven or ten o'clock unloading, give them parking spots up there to, to pull in, that way they're not parking in the middle of the street, especially with school going on and all.
Yeah, what about, um, with the, uh, the schools, with the signage and the, uh, speed bumps, if we made any progress?
I think I saw something from Ronnie where maybe we got some speed bumps in for North, uh, Holy Trinity.
Yeah.
You know, um, so I'll see when they get on that, signs, he probably had the signs ready when those go out as well, to put out with that, and all, so we should be good to go.
Alright, sounds good, and the other thing I had was tomorrow morning, uh, hosting a blood drive, uh, there at the church at the Knights Columbus from nine to three. I know the blood, uh, mobile was over here yesterday, huh, at City Hall?
It was.
So if anybody didn't get to donate yesterday, anyone to donate tomorrow morning, they'll be, be over there by.
Wait for that, Jane?
It's two twenty-eight South Beach Boulevard, but it's basically at O L G Church in the parking lot.
Okay, okay.
Uh, from nine to three. That's all I have.
And they can buy something they, huh, buy them a dinner to take.
Councilman Reed?
Uh, nothing, I, I got some questions on this, uh, the change order, but we can wait till we get there.
Okay.
I have some also, Jeffrey.
Alright, you good, Councilman Zerman? Alright. Alright, next item up is the project updates. Alright, Mr. Kanishi?
Alrighty, we have a couple of discussion items tonight, uh, I believe you should have this information in your packets. Uh, the first one is a grant, uh, that was presented to us a couple of weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, that we've been working on. It's through the National Heritage Grant, or Mississippi Outdoor Stewardship Grant, sorry. So this one is basically for recreational improvements, um, park improvements, things like that. This was one that, uh, I believe the state, uh, Lieutenant Governor has been pushing for some funding and, and trying to get additional funding for. Uh, what was targeted in this grant application would be some additional improvements to the Bayou La Croix boat launch. Um, if you look at the site plan that we've submitted, basically it would be to extend the pier on the north side of the site, about a hundred and forty-five feet. Uh, which would provide additional, um, docking space, uh, be a low-level pier, similar to the ones that the contractor installed now for smaller boats. Um, a kayak ramp would be installed at the end of that, uh, pier location for launching. Um, with that pier, we'd also extend the bulkhead, so there's about a hundred and twenty feet of bulkhead through there. Uh, there's some parking improvements, just to, to reorganize or straighten out, um, reorient the entrance, so you can see that from the site plan. Right now, kinda going through, uh. The old road that was in there, uh, and the, the property owner that accesses the property to the north, the way they have to go now is they come through the boat launch site, and then they, uh. Onto the city property, then they curve back around to get to their property, so some of those would change that intersection there, that they would have a straight shot to get to their property and not have, not, uh, have to go through the boat launch parking area. And then a rope fence, some signage, some additional amenities like benches and trash cans, things like that. There is no match requirement for this, uh, what they do is they score it based on the information that you submit. Uh, so what we're doing is, or what we predict, what we're planning to do is use the existing improvements at the site for the match, and that's how we wrote the grant around for that. They're looking for, you know, just any type of, of new outdoor facility, uh, we estimate the cost of the improvement, uh, to be about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that's what we put together, and the deadline for this is February twenty-eighth, um, so we do need a resolution, I think the resolution is in the package as well. So that's the last item we need, is, uh, that resolution and authorization for the mayor to sign the application to submit, it is extremely competitive, there's about ten million dollars for the whole state. Uh, so the state parks are putting in for these projects, all the cities, counties, just about every organization I can think of, it's a big project, so.
Jason, what's the depth of that canal?
Well, and it's about three feet deep, um, this photo, we took this earlier this week, and of course, we're having some very low tides.
Yeah.
Uh, so you can see some of the mud line, we included some dredging of that canal as well, about a thousand yards we have to remove, so that you could dock along that pier. But it does get pretty shallow in that canal, which is why we look to see some of the smaller boats that access it, be a good spot for the kayak to launch through there too.
Are they gonna put a kayak launch there, or are they just launching the dock, or in the slip?
Yeah, the kayak, so what we'd like to do is just do a, a separate kayak launch off the end of that pier, uh, right now, I've seen them launch through the, through the ramp as well, and, um. Six of one, half dozen of the other, I guess, if you got boats trying to launch and back down the ramp, you really don't want kayakers trying to launch at the same time, so, thought was to have a designated location that they could launch. So it wouldn't interfere with anything, the boat launching or loading.
You don't wanna kayak coming in when a boat's trying to go out.
Yeah, I mean, it's really not the safest thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not a, it's not a floating launch, uh, like you've seen, um, kind of around the county's got a couple of them, uh, Dominate has a few of them. Basically, it's just a ramp, a FRP grading that slopes down into the water, uh, it's like a mini version of a boat launch, basically, and you could walk your kayak down and launch from there. So there's no gangway, there's no floating mechanism, they can walk away, that's the one that Dominate has done a couple of times, uh, twice, so it's a pretty simple structure.
And I've seen them out there fishing the other day around the bridge in kayaks, so they must've just paddled around there. Yeah.
It's actually a pretty big ecotourism industry, I mean, Dominate has three. Two right now, that, they're planning on two more, uh, Henderson Point has one, the county has one, so, a long way to paddle, though. One out there, the county has two, actually, one at the end of the road, actually, think that one may have walked away, but, uh, then there's one at Lambert Lane or Pleasure Street, down in Clamor Harbor.
So you need a motion to.
Yeah.
Approve the resolution and authorize the mayor to sign in the same motion, or? Okay, uh, make a motion to approve the resolution, um. Supporting Mississippi Outdoor Stewardship Grant program for the Bayou La Croix boat launch and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Alright, motion by Councilman DeSalvo.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hoffman, any discussion, both the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright, motion carry seven zero? Thank you.
Thank you, we'll, we'll get that submitted, hopefully tomorrow. Alright, the next item is on the police department, uh, so, we have been working with, um, chief sports on some floor plan revisions. And some surveillance IP, uh, enhancements, um. Probably around October, November, we started talking about what type of surveillance and IT system they wanted inside the, uh, the station itself. What was included in the original bid and original scope of work were IT locations for data port at each outlet, uh, throughout each office. Um, so we identified some areas where they would like to have more capability for computers and software programs and, and access to the internet, and their wifi system through that, uh, to those locations. So that's one of the inclusions in the, uh, change order, um, there's a breakdown from the contractor of all individual items, uh, that we've looked at. Uh, another key component is the surveillance, um, we've got approximately forty-two camera locations. Um, that doesn't mean we're gonna have forty-two cameras included, uh, but we're gonna have wires, uh, power and catsick cables pulled to approximately forty-two locations, interior and exterior. Uh, so that as a police department grows and need to add surveillance or cameras in certain areas, at least have the wires there, you don't have to go back and run. at least have the wires there, don't have to go back and run a wire to add the cameras. Um, some of the other revisions, uh, there's some fence changes, uh, that would be better for the, um, for the Sallyport area. Uh, what was in the original bid, original quote was a six-foot chain link fence. Um, what would be better from a security standpoint is to have an eight-foot tall fence with some privacy slats, I guess that's the black coated slats, uh, for security reasons. Um, some of the interior changes, and they're all identified, there's a site plan that has the architectural changes, and then it's got an electrical plan that shows where all the new I T and data ports are and that surveillance cameras are located. Uh, some of the other interior floor plan changes are, um, the bathroom revisions, um, so there was one large, uh, there were two bathrooms near the lobby, one was a male, one was a female, um, so what we wanted to do there to give more restroom to the officers, uh, behind the, you know, the scenes, behind the lock, the accessible doors, uh, to convert one of those bathrooms into two unisex bathrooms. So there's some plumbing revisions, uh, to go along with that change. And again, keep in mind, whenever we change a room, there's plumbing, electrical, H P A C, fire sprinkler, flooring, ceiling, all those individual trades are affected by these, so it's not just moving a wall around, but some other stuff that we have to go through. Uh, where the showers are, we expanded those showers, there was a large area that was open, um, so we enclosed that in for some additional office and storage space. We expanded the showers, that there could be more locker for future growth, if they have, you know, more, uh, officers that are come on to the office later on, and they'll have enough room in their shower areas for, for individual lockers. Uh, we also did some revisions too, there was a large room, um, on the front of the, near the lobby, I can't remember what room number it was, it was in my letter, uh, but there was one room where we split it to two interview rooms, it was kind of a mid-sized conference room, um, near another larger conference room. So that one was split in two, but again, had fire suppression changes and, uh, H P A C, electrical lighting, all that kind of stuff. Uh, but it gives them the flexibility to use those as offices or interview rooms. Uh, so again, looking at growth, uh, be factored into the, to the floor plan on the interior. I think those are, some lighting on the exterior, uh, some additional lighting, especially near the parking lot. Um, I think there's a, a growing trend now to have safe zones, secure drop-off zones, I don't remember the exact phrase of it, but, uh, for internet purchases, Facebook Marketplace and Craigslist, a lot of, a lot of police departments are kind of promoting to come to there, that location and make your transactions, so it's a safe zone.
To clarify, we're not, we're not doing safe use zones, just safe zones.
Safe use zones?
There's, there's other, there's other safe zones.
No drugs, drug use allowed on one side of the safe zone.
Oh, yeah, no, that's not, I don't, that's not the intent with it.
Well, not just San Francisco.
Yeah, um, so there's additional lighting that, that needs to be installed for that, to make that area a secure area. Uh, there are some credits in here, so there were some glass that we had, interior glass that, uh, that Ed had shown in different office locations. Um, and so by now making those into interview rooms and different, different uses, um, that glass was deleted from the contract. Uh, there's some changes to the evidence room, where there was a roll-up door for access, um, so that was taken out, that's just a solid, a solid wall right now. Uh, some of the fence changes, again, um, the contractor had actually factored in decorative fence around the Sallyport and the garage area on the backside of it, uh, so there's actually a small credit for that change. The increase you see with the fences to go with, uh, control gate access, um, that the officers could pull up, the gate would automatically open, it's got an automatic gate, open and close function on it, uh, so there's some, there's some additional cost for, for those units as well. I think that covers the, the highlights of it.
Where, uh, where are we gonna get the two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars from?
That's a big question right now.
Cause, you know, uh, being in construction, change orders are expensive. And, um, matter of fact, uh, on jobs like this, this is where I make most of my money on change orders. And this is why architects and engineers, uh, need upfront, uh, need to design it, so we won't have a deal like this here, to the city and to the citizens. Uh, and, 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 I do understand, you know, as we go along, uh, some change orders are necessary, but, um, this is a, it's a big change order.
These guys to do it, or we can pay whoever comes in and does the cameras and get them to install, crawl through the attic and all and pull wires, fishing down through the walls and everything, which would probably cost us more money what this is gonna cost, you know, as far as the electrical now. Again, this is not the cameras or any surveillance now, but this will all be pre-wired and everything for that. You know, the other ones is, is opportunities to create more office space now, instead of big rooms and all, you know, new chief in, you know, he felt, you know, this would better suit the police department and still give us plenty of opportunity for growth and everything, you know, into the future and many, many years to come, you know, and I, and I agree, this is where they, I ha- I hate this, you know, to, to have to go to them with change orders. You know, um, again, I think for the most part it was done for what was asked to be done, it's just with another set of eyes on it. You know, they see some of these changes as, as more needed than smaller rooms and in larger rooms, you know? And that's what the other electrical part is, which is, I don't have it right exactly, but, you know, that's the other electrical is, is rewiring some of the stuff in these new rooms and all, you know, so.
Jason, what is the F, F ten fixture?
An F ten fixture?
I said, the six of them?
I mean, they got six of them for two thousand dollars a piece.
Oh, that's the exterior lighting?
Exterior.
Yeah, they're called wall packs.
Wall pack for two thousand dollars?
That's for the safe zone that goes in the parking lot.
And what, what, what is the, the lumens on it, I mean, there's, there's no description in here, I just think the price is extremely high.
Yeah.
Why don't you bid that out? I mean, I, I can get wall, I do wall packs all day long, and I've never seen prices like that.
Okay, I'd have to juggle that, I mean, I think he specified what the, what the light fixtures were, I don't-
I mean, you can get L E D, three hundred watt fixtures, that'll blow light all over the parking lot. For cheaper than for a couple, two hundred and fifty dollars a piece.
Might be because it's more of a decorative feature, it's going in the cast stone, in the style of the, the style of the, uh, police department.
I think it's excessive.
I mean, I mean, I hate to pick it, I'm, I'm looking at just the, I mean-
I don't disagree with you, that's, that was one of the items we looked at, so what is, what are we doing with this?
Huh?
We went through that.
I mean, you're looking at nine hundred and fifty dollars for a, a soap dispenser, towel waist combo, two grab bars and a mirror, I mean.
I mean, I think, just looking at some of these prices in here, Jason, they're ridiculous, and, you know, I think y'all need to probably just go back to the drawing board and, uh, you know, say, hey, you know, they're making, you know, they're just gouging it in some ways, you know?
Well, I love change orders, it was working for me.
Yeah, I know, but they're just taking, they've been taking advantage of the situation, there's no oversight on it. I mean, this is your job.
Jason, is there an opportunity to get back on some of these and get some alternative quotes and maybe get this price down?
I think, I think there is, I mean, what we would kind of run into is now the timing, that standpoint, I mean, they're, the contractor, they are working on the, the walls inside, the sheet rock, they're putting that up in certain areas, they, they did commit to not including, or not walling, or covering up some of these walls that we make, have to pull new I T and camera location, things like that, um. If we want to go back to them and, and, and take a stab and maybe reduce some of this stuff and then come back, you know, at the next meeting in March, I guess that, that's an opportunity there, I don't know how much flexibility we have with some of the floor plan changes at that point, um, just without having any further delays, you know, to the contractor. Uh, he is also asking for some additional days with these changes, but it's gonna take him longer to go through and, and do it all.
The firdowns that they tan out, why, why they have to tan out all those firdowns?
The ones in the lobby?
Well, we got quite a bit of them in there.
Which one, where are you at, Jeffrey?
Uh, firdowns, uh.
Is that on the Aladdin quote?
Yeah, um, they got reworked firdowns, um, now, most of the stuff that they're going to charge us for, they got it highlighted. And it's just reworked, on, on the page, they got reworked, framed, firdowns at the entry that are already framed, they got a fifteen thousand dollar charge on there. Is this for all the work that they're including in there, or just, just for the firdowns?
No, this is, this is for everything that included, I don't know why that's highlighted at one particular item. Yeah.
We can leave those firdowns.
Yeah, I mean, if you see complete the following scope, it's got all the items listed and then the additional charge of fifteen thousand for everything that's in there. Which a lot of that is wall revisions, a lot of that is new, you know, new sheet rock and moisture back in the bathroom locations. New metal doors, hollow metal door frames.
Yeah, cause he had a note there, you know, uh, revises due to the firdown changes, uh. So in reading that, I, I'm, I'm, I was just confused on that.
Yeah.
Because he got it highlighted. And, uh, now did they just miss fifty-one feet of cast stone, or they adding fifty-one feet of cast stone? Cause it's just, you know, you, you take the linear feet of the building.
Which one is that, I'm sorry?
Uh.
Also in the front entrance? Yeah, so the front entrance had the steps going down, straight out towards the street, in the original site plan. Um, and with all the parking on the west side of the buil- of the building, the thought was to break the steps up and have some coming off, off that side for easier access, but when you move the steps around, then there's more cast stone that they have to put on that front side, to tie into the rest of the building.
And that's not a, that's not an A D A, I mean, that's just a simple convenience, trying to change the locations, basically.
Yeah, that's just move, splitting the steps, so we're ten or fifteen foot wide on the, on the original site plan, and we're just moving them around to the side.
What was that, that was six thousand?
Yeah, I think that was one of the first.
Sixty-four hundred?
Yeah, sixty-four hundred for the additional stone.
Just some ten thousand, twelve thousand, six thousands add up over time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just don't know what the funding would come from, from this, I mean, if you look at what we're outlaying, just look at the, uh, cash statements, trying to understand where, where we at and, you know, if we did approve a two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar change order, where would it, where would it be coming from, where would we pay it from, or casino and sales tax are up some, but I think those are tailed off a little bit, so.
So what's gonna bring the total price of the police station up to?
Uh, the original bid was four point two million, and then we've had, um, like a ten thousand dollar change order for the site, the parking lot improvement area. And then around thirty or so for, uh, the showers that were added, originally that was change order two. Uh, so with this, say another two fifty with, including this change order, so about four and a half million.
So we did already do some shower?
No, we don't have any increase in this, that's just a construction cost, right? I guess it'd be four point seven, four point eight?
Raising the fe- the height of those fences from six feet to eight feet, we need a variance?
Mm-hmm.
Considering this, and Jason, you may be able to speak to this, the other day when we were talking, aren't there some things in this change order that have to be done?
Why did we design it for six feet?
We knew them.
You know, and now we gotta pay a change order.
Oh, the fence, I, I don't, I don't know, but I just, wasn't there some parts of this change order that aren't optional that?
I, I don't know, I mean, the front entrance is the only thing that re- really that they started on, I mean, all the electrical and all the I T is, I mean, there was already that included in the original bid, so you're actually getting a, a credit for the fence, like I mentioned earlier.
Yeah, but like exterior lighting, I mean, you have to have some sort of exterior, I mean, there's some things that you have to-
Yeah, I mean, we could look at a different source of, a different fixture.
The only thing that I will caution you all from a legal standpoint is just, if we start causing, they've gotten this, this change order, we have our options, so if we start causing delays, um, then things could be on us, and so if they, they, their contract, Mr. Jeffrey can speak to this, but they're contracted to push forward with it, so if something's changed at a later time, it could come back on, on us or be more costly in the future, so it's neither here nor there, but I have an obligation to tell you about it.
I think most of the interior walls that they've installed are, are for their original layout, uh, so there wouldn't be any changes. Or we've had the, the two change orders, they've already made those, those, those modifications, but a lot of this, you can see, and that's factored into some of their costs is, they've already installed some of those walls, now they gotta take them down, move them, move doors, things, things like that, so there's a lot of demo included in these costs as well. Um, so, you know, do we have to do those, some of those floor plan changes, I think they help the, the P D have room to grow, I think to get it to the, the, the way that the chief envisioned seeing it, um, I, I guess I can't really answer, do we have to do those or not?
Comments the chief and Alvin and others made is, once they've walked through it, and especially those two interview rooms, when you first come in, go to the right, and you see this one large, and I'm gonna call it a large room for an interview room, they were like, this could be two interview rooms. If we put up a wall here, you know, that gives us two, and they're still some good size, you know, compared to one, so do you put the wall now, do you do it later? If you want to add it, so that was one, and then in the back, towards, I think, uh, patrol meeting room, it's like, I'm gonna call it a big, almost, the hallway is just, there's, you know, it's just wide.
An open space.
So it opens up, it's like, what is this, just really dead space, but if you put up a, a, you know, an L-shaped thing, you basically have created a storage room or something else, so it's just, as you walk through it, now that it's up and you see walls, you go, man, this is kind of big, we could actually use this space. So you make those changes or not, you know, they don't have to be done, you know, but I think there's benefit to it, and I also just think is, you're building a fifty-year asset. You know, it's not a one-year deal, you know, you're building something for a long time, so, yeah, it sounds like, you know, change orders sucks, but is it the best interest right now while it's under construction, is it, you know, it's probably gonna be the cheapest way to get those changes made, unfortunately. But if you don't want to do it, boom.
So where-
I would comment just the electrical, the, the I T part for the cameras, you know, again, the outlets were included, but the, running the wires were not part of the original contract, it's just probably cheaper and easier while these wall, walls are open, to put that in place, so that all you have to do whenever they contract with an I T company is attach the cameras, whichever, which is separate, and that'll come later. So there's a couple of those, I mean, does it have to happen? No, but we're coming, we gotta run those wires at some point.
So all the, so cameras, I know we keep talking about those, so the cameras are gonna be located throughout the whole P D? So there's gonna be a monitor, a switchboard, somebody's gonna sit at and watch all the cameras, or where the cameras are.
Chief, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, cause like internet, like cat five, we don't run cat five cable no more, everything's wireless in our buildings. And we, everything's wireless, we don't run cables anymore.
Yeah, we wanted to set it up for wireless as well, but, uh, we wanted to drop some proper box, uh, the outlet, all of that, so as it does grow out, we're not going back.
Right.
As far as cameras go, uh, you have to have a, we want a minimum amount around the building.
Right.
Inside, so your areas like your evidence need to have.
Okay.
So areas like that, uh, the lobby area, where citizens come in, make support, we want them to feel really safe.
Right.
And our ladies behind the window, who are, uh, taking, citizens come in, whether they have good intentions or they're combative. Wait, so we have, you know, three to four cameras positioned in there, we have identification of somebody comes in, as well as if there's a problem, they run back out, we know where they are. On the outside, the cameras, uh, we have that, that safe area, it's basically in the, the public parking lot citizens drive into, we want it well lit. You don't want a dark parking lot to drive into and they feel safe, or feel unsafe driving into the police department. You'll have a lot of, uh, custodial exchanges go on there. You'll have a lot of, uh, custodial exchanges go on there, that's the reason for the lighting. We're just trying to get it right from the beginning, see the rooms, we wanna expand on. If you walk through there now, you realize this is wasted space, this is wasted space, this was thought out well in just a couple spots. So we wanted to make those adjustments now, uh, to grow into, because we will use that space. Uh, locker room, that was a big thing I noticed in the beginning, uh, the men, the male officers have a locker room. Uh, the female officer did not, we have three females right now currently with, uh, there's no doubt my mind will have at least a half dozen at some point. And the room being built for them, slap in the face, walk in there, the only room in the plan when they did it, one female to walk in there, lock the door. Uh, no other females could go in and use, so we wanted to build out, uh, room to it, so the females would have adequate room, uh, to put their gear, show their gear, that kind of thing, not just perform. Those, it's little things like that that we're making adjustments to now, uh, because again, it is like Ms. Riso said, in thirty, forty years, the police department's still gonna be there. Uh, we don't, we want it to, to suffice for fifty years that we're happy and it's a productive work environment for the life of our property. So those are the adjustments, uh, we're asking. And obviously, between the council and contract, uh, work on the price, uh, but we're asked to expand on that space. It is need space.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so I mean, the, the women's locker rooms makes sense, cameras makes sense, lighting, I'm iffy on the lighting, cuz the police station's not twenty-four seven operation for personnel to go into. We don't have public coming into the police station at night, cuz it's not open, right?
I'm okay with the lighting.
Well, just saying, but we're not, it's not.
I'm just saying that the price of the fix.
But I'm just saying, we're talking about safe zone at night, well, police is not a twenty-four seven, public access building. It's only during the day where it's accessed, lighting's fine, um.
I think the lighting would be more, people selling stuff on Facebook, Meetup, there, stuff like that, you know?
We can, we can go all kind of avenues down the road like that, but, you know, but.
Dropping kids off, exchanging kids.
To this, but I think this police station will be utilized, cuz even if you go to City Hall right now, in the middle of the night, at any given point of time, there could be an officer, and there are people that come in, I mean, if somebody gets arrested, if, or if they're sitting there, staging there, so keep that in mind. It's, it, we're not as in and out as say the Sheriff's Department maybe, but we are in and out of the police department.
I said, public access at, uh, twenty-four seven for the police department is what we're saying.
I don't, that's a Toby question, if they, I mean.
Yeah, right, but we, yeah, right, yeah, we're, we're just not, I don't understand that. Um, Ms. Riso, where we got two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars laying around in our budget to, if we approve these change orders?
If you notice the email I sent y'all, just to kind of preference this agenda item.
I don't remember.
You know, because of just time was the idea of, hey, we kinda gotta look at this, but right now, if you approve tonight, it's saying, hey, we're using cash flow, we're using what we have in-house. The other piece behind it was, I'm trying to work on a, oh, just overall master project list to get to y'all, which Jason's staff has been great to get me, and I have it. I just haven't been able to finish reading it all, it's thirty-something, but, you know, to be looking at what are all the projects? What are we looking at that's under construction now, what are we looking at that's gonna be under construction in the near future? So just trying to picture, what's our cash flow needs going forward? Cuz if you're talking overall, these projects, it's about thirty-four or so million dollars, and there's some local matches, but there's also just us funding it and getting, waiting to get reimbursed. Especially the FEMA stuff, um, you know, so that, that's where I'm going next with y'all, is to start saying, okay, how do we project this cash? You know, there's a lot going on, especially, I mean, the IDA project that's coming, I mean, that's getting ready.
When's it, when's it gonna be finished?
Uh, right now, mid-July, it's projected completion date.
And I think you gave some.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Uh, some preliminary numbers, I know you're working on it, Ms. Riso, basing all the projects we have, but you're looking at, you have five hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand per proj- I mean, it's just, so it all adds up, that thirty-nine projects we've got, I know that the timing of it, but I mean, it's.
Looking at staging and when, when do you want these, and what's priority in that, the cash flow?
Yeah, I think we had the conversation before, do we finance some of this police department, cuz I'm thinking we're gonna have about two point eight billion of all cash in this building, aren't we? At this fake, cuz the two-fifths from the Gordon Center, two point three.
The city's already leveraged.
And two point eight for that, that's kinda figured out cash. Just, just a thought, so, okay.
So just looking at our cash balances, right, we probably gonna get another five hundred thousand dollars from property taxes this year. Which, you know, we're at one point six now, so we're at two, two million dollars in ca- in, um, general fund operating money, right? So, which is probably the low for this time of year with thirty-three percent of the budget cycle, I don't have to go back and look at some of the numbers, right, and see exactly where we are on, how we fix for cash, right, this time of year, first, first last year at the same time, right? Um, that's my question. So yeah, we'll get, we'll probably get another half million dollars from the county, looking at property taxes or tax influx. Uh, but some of our other balances, municipal reserve funds down to, you know, forty-four thousand, it looks like two hundred and twenty-one thousand we get reimbursed. Um, municipal special funds down to nothing till we get reimbursed, so, you know, we really need to understand, talking about cash flow on these projects, um, it don't look like we have a whole lot coming back in on the cash balance sheet for some of these projects, so. Yeah, I'm just concerned about this large amount of change order and how, how we can fund it right now. With the data.
Well, we can borrow from ourselves, so we can always do.
We don't have it.
Huh?
Well, where we gonna borrow it from?
Well, you could borrow some, you can borrow some money from the, uh, utility capital maintenance fund, from that. You could borrow from the mi- milli- uh, meter deposits, as long as you set up a schedule of payment. You can borrow that money.
Okay.
You have to ha- you have to have a set time that you're gonna pay it back and pay it on the schedule according to the state.
Right, right.
The state highly encourages you not to borrow from restricted accounts.
Well, they told me different, they told me that you can borrow from any fund that you have, as long as you set up a thing, uh, a schedule of payment back.
Okay, I'm just, I've talked to them multiple times and that's what they, so we might have to get on the phone together one day and see, cuz sometimes you can talk to different people and they give you different answers. But I've talked to them multiple times and they've said if it's a restricted fund, you, you should not touch it because that is restricted for certain things.
So which one you're talking about?
The utility operating's got nine seventy-five, utility meter is restricted. So.
I don't have a fr- I don't have a list in front of me of what, what accounts are restricted and what, what not.
Utility meters is restricted, utility operating fund is just a.
Projects that matches as far as, I know Ramonita, I think, I don't know what the match is, I don't have my paperwork, you might remember off yet.
Twenty percent.
Twenty.
Yeah. It's about a four hundred thousand dollar project, so.
Hundred and twenty thousand something.
Yeah.
I think, I think that, um, that if you manage your money properly and you borrow some from other accounts that you're allowed to borrow from, you'd be fine. And, uh, just take it out the general fund at this point. And see how to, end of the year, I mean, he's talking June, July of this year.
July top, right?
Yeah. Five months. How we doing on the, on the payroll? I mean, are we over or under? There you go. I mean, the money's gonna, it's gonna reveal itself.
I'm just not that comfortable with it. Uh, yeah, I mean, we just got a lot of balls in the air and this is not one that we planned on juggling.
Well, un- unfortunately, this is already in the works.
Well, I know, but, so, I mean, you, so the women's locker room, you gotta do it, right? Cameras, you gotta do it, right? Stair movements, you, you don't have to do it, you don't have to move a fence, you don't have to build extra rooms, you don't have to do the rest of it. I understand the future, right, but I'm working today's money, I don't have future money, I'm working on what I have today. Um, and if I, I do remodeling in five years and I got a million dollars to remodel it, then I do it then. Um, I just, that's just my, my rub today is, uh, uh, we have a lot of balls in there and this is not one we wanna put up there and, honestly, we don't have to do it right now, the women's locker room, we need to do it, needs to be done, they need to have their own locker room, it's, it's a mess on our part and whoever's part. Cameras need, if you need to drop in cat sick cable for the cameras, then that's thirty-nine thousand, there's another eighteen thousand dollars in there as well for electrical. Um, I think things like that are required, um, I think some of the niceties are not required. Um, so I think the bare bones, my personal opinion is, put the bare bones, what we need to have get done, get it done, bring that change order back. Um, and we can move forward, that's my personal opinion, that's, some of this stuff is, I, I know what you were looking at, chief, but right now I'm looking at my, my, my pocketbook and I'm just not comfortable with it.
I mean, you're sitting with seven hundred and five thousand dollars in the modernization use tax?
Yeah, but I know we, but we've already committed a lot of this money to, to, to matching funds, and till we get a, a list with that.
Restricted on certain, that's your, what is it, road bridges.
Infrastructure.
Pulled it up, but it's not, it's not just infrastructure, it's road.
What I'm saying is you can borrow from it, as long as you pay it back.
Again, but those, Gary, they have to, you have to give a report to the state on exactly, Riso, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but I think you have to turn in.
You have an annual report to give on that, to show what you've been spending, and you gotta maintain spending and it's, you know, at a certain level.
How much have we spent on the police department already? Because, I mean, are we expecting some reimbursements back?
And we're, we're submitting those as you approve it.
Yeah, each month.
So there's four hundred thousand or something, there's a payment on here tomorrow, that'll be getting shut, sent off.
So how much, how much you have left to pay?
But we turned in, have we received any back?
I believe so.
So how much, how much do you have to pay now to finish project as is without the change order?
I don't know off the top of my head, I can get to that.
Because I, from what I'm seeing, you don't have enough to finish it.
You've got two million something, again, that's on the city, half of that building, I think it was only two million that came in grant, or.
Yeah, but we set our two million aside. Two point five almost, yeah. So when are we getting the grant money?
We're submitting every receipt as y'all approve it to get reimbursed. How much?
Eighty percent.
What's the role on their paying? What's the role on them paying, ninety days, thirty days, sixty days, hundred, twenty days, how, how quickly are they paying?
Overall, I mean, I've been, with DMR, I mean, we set up like an ACH payment now. But, I mean, to me, they've been kind of being, in sixty, ninety days, you're seeing reimbursement.
We're seeing it pretty, pretty decent. And it's consistent, so as we submit it, it's, you know, we know it's coming in in sixty to ninety days, it's fee.
Correct.
How far are you out from finishing that report, you think, with all the project list, cuz my thoughts is maybe, if we can complete that soon, maybe see if we can do a little bit less and getting the cost, taking some things out. I, I would come to a special meeting in the week or so to, to approve something and not hold it up for two weeks, however, tonight, I think there's a lot of uncertainties before we approve a big change order like that, cuz I think, like, like Doug says, a lot of things we juggling right now and a lot of money you gotta go out, you only spend, this, this million, so many millions ways, you know?
We met yesterday morning?
Much larger insurance bill than we expected.
Yeah, yeah.
Take a shock to us too, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I just. I think we gotta start watching, watching it. I think you need to find some answers on these restricted accounts and find out exactly what we can use. And I mean, within the next few days. Because this, we, I mean, we have all, we got millions of dollars here and you can't use it. It's always been, I've been told by the state auditor's office, you can borrow from any fund, as long as you set up a schedule to pay it back. They didn't say any, any things on restricted funds or anything like that.
I'll get your answer to that.
I guess, even that, we gotta have a, a plan to pay it back to ourselves too. That's, can do it to the next budget. You know, you can set up, you can borrow. And I think some of the things you had to pay back the same budget year if you borrowed from it, or no? Nope, nope, nope. As long as you set up a payment schedule. No, that's not, that's not the case.
That's what I was told.
Let's, we guess we need to get a direct opinion.
You get us some, definite.
I'm just saying what, what I was told.
Soon.
And I agree, I think Councilman Seale, that's all, just trim some of the fat off of this and see what we can work with on the.
Gary, one thing also, we have projects in the works where utility funds are gonna be needed.
Well, we have this modernization use tax also.
Yeah, that's, that's set up by the state for restricted, what it can be used for, now can you borrow? Never asked that question.
I know it's a new tax, it's a new, it's a new thing.
Yeah, it, it was set up for what you could use it for, um, again, I've never asked about that one, it, you know, relatively new. But we can get them answered.
We can get an opinion on that.
I've gotten one.
I have two on some of it.
I passed out an email when I was president last, clearly stating what it was, I'll dig that email out.
But again, when we called.
I didn't call, I got an email, so. If that's, I'm not against another change, I just wanna make sure we can, how we're gonna fund it, you know?
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Yeah, and that, that's me also, I'm not against, I, I just know change orders are expensive, I'm not against it, I'm, I've always been one that, with err on the side of doing more than enough and not enough, uh, so it's just how we're gonna fund it, yeah.
I have a question, and, and I don't know, can we approve like the electrical part of this? The change order on that, or is this a whole package?
When we were in that meeting the other day, Dan, I asked that question and Dan said we could pick what.
So, I mean, like electrical is holding up a lot with sheet rock, am I right? I know the other is walls being moved.
Oh, cables and stuff happening while they're open.
Right, but if we can maybe approve that, then that would let them move forward with starting to close walls in, in those areas and all.
I think that's something. To get the walls closed in, so then they can start all their interior finished.
I mean, Jason, wasn't that your impression the other day, and that's why it's broken down?
That's why he gave us the breakout, so I think that's right.
And then he, and all the contractor subs, he inclu- you know, included all of that documentation, and I think that was the intent, was so that we wouldn't have to because we knew we were under a tolerance.
We can always look at recess and you can get some of that information, look at what the priority and do something next week, so we can see exactly what needs to be done, and that way it's not, that way we're not, but, yeah, sun anything up.
Not blind.
We good Monday or Tuesday maybe?
I can't make it Monday.
You can?
I can't, I can make it Tuesday.
And then maybe we can get an answer from can we borrow from ourselves also, in the midst of that.
And I can also, I'm in the middle of building the house right now, and when walls are up, it's totally different than looking at it on paper. You know, when you start walking in rooms, I've changed three.
Well, when you walk in this building, I don't know who's been in it yet, my first time walking in with walls up, I'm like, holy cow. It, it's a pretty big building, you know, usually walls look smaller, but not.
Are y'all putting soundproofing in between the two interview rooms?
Yeah, I believe they're insulated.
I would think.
Bad insulation.
Uh, well, I would say this, that we'll close in, once they get the sheet rock up, 'cause I remember when we were building our office, I felt the same way, you see everything through the wall. They start closing the rooms in, then you start seeing exactly how, how those rooms fall together.
Get tighter.
Yeah, it does get tighter.
So what you would've done different by your building, build bigger?
Built it bigger.
Really?
Aren't you already going into your upstairs? You're expanding the room.
Is that, that gives us time to maybe find out some answers on the restricted committed funds?
Yeah, I.
Jason, we can see what kinda, what kinda order we need to go in and.
Yeah, we can get, we could try to get some feedback from the contractor, the thing about it is, the costs that you see are, uh, sub-costs, and he has some of his, his prices in it too, but he's gonna have taxes and bonds and insurance and stuff he's gotta add to it, so we need to kind of figure out exactly what.
Higher than that.
Need to figure out what we want in this first go-around and then get him to revise it, uh, you know, so we can look at taking out some of the wall, basically, a lot of the wall revisions except the, the female shower, what, kinda what I'm hearing from you guys, I mean, there's the bathroom up front that we're splitting in two, I mean, they can save one bathroom right now, um.
I think the women's locker room's a big, one of the big, big hitters for me, that we just gotta do.
The bathroom they're splitting in two, um, they, they got to do the plumbing, they, they got to plum all of that, right? So if we come back and do it, then you're gonna tear walls out to, uh, to plum all of that.
Walls and floors, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, that's what I'm saying, uh, we just need to find a way to, to, uh, fund this, you know?
Some of the stuff to do it in the future, walls, closing in, that's one thing, but anything plumbing wise, anything electrical, I mean, it, again, I can vouch for IT, it's a lot more expensive to come, add some drops and cameras after the fact. It is about three times as expensive.
Was there, I know we had left it, does Tuesday give it, give you guys enough time admin wise, or do we wanna?
Yeah, next Thursday maybe, Tuesday, Thursday.
I'm good, I'm just, I'm just looking more at the contractors to make adjustments to a change order, I think y'all ought to have a specific change order that you're approving, compared to picking stuff out, I think that would be a hard document for y'all, that's just my.
Oh yeah, we will have to get with him to revise his costs, because his, all those percentages and markup and everything would change, so it could go from two hundred and twenty-one thousand down to a hundred and fifty thousand, I, I don't know what that number is.
I, I mean, Heather, I'm just gonna lean to you a little bit, and just say, you know, once we have all that, why don't we do a special called meeting, instead of recessing, not knowing if we'll have Dan's response, you know, if we tell Dan tomorrow.
Then we don't have it.
Yeah, compared to, once you know it, you can call a special meeting and have it that day, once we post it.
Yeah. Yeah, that works.
It just gives you all a little, I think, more flexibility.
And I'll have to go walk to the building too, maybe this week.
It's really cool if you have to, yeah.
Gary can't make Monday, so, Monday may be the only day.
I know, Jeremy, back up over there, tell us on the mic.
Everybody else good the rest of the week pretty much?
There's a utility authority meeting Wednesday.
Y'all, not y'all, it's mine, yes.
Mine's on.
Jason is, Jason from the contractor responding, from the contractor respondent, give us a revised package, I mean, can he have it by Tuesday or what?
Uh, I mean, he's gotta go back to his subs, get them to revise their pricing, it, it took him about a month to put all, pull all this together. So I, we could have a goal of next Thursday, but I like, I like the idea of, once we have it, and let's schedule a meeting at that point. I think that would be appropriate, we could shoot for Thursday, but I, I mean, he's got a, again, it touches all seven of his subcontractors whenever we make a change.
The goal's Thursday, it could be.
Yeah.
Yes, Tuesday, there will be no planning on a Tuesday night, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so I just tell the rest of the council, he was telling me, didn't advertise, Echo didn't run the advertisement.
I got way to hold on for this guy.
All right, I think we got a plan.
So when you looked at the scheduling, it was only like either a week or a matter of days, by the time you got all the notices republished, so it didn't make any sense to postpone it.
As soon as you can do it would be March, Friday, March seventeenth.
Yeah.
Because the paper comes out on Thursday, now maybe Wednesday, and y'all are meeting on the twenty-first.
All right, then we got a plan, everyone good with, all right, any other questions for Mr. Kanichi?
I'm good for now.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll move on, I do apologize, I skipped the public forums, so if there's anybody in attendance that would like to speak or have signed up.
There's not, I thought you skipped it, because you realized when I was busting in line, you don't get it, that there's nobody signed up, I was wiped out.
No, well. Yeah, thinking that's one of the who's in the crowd, I figured, not a lot of folks that are here, but, all right, so we'll move on to Mr. Risa, City Clerk's report.
Yeah, it's just a motion to approve the docket of claims twenty-three dash zero zero eight dated February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of one million, six hundred, thirty thousand, two hundred, two dollars and twenty-two cents. I did send y'all some kind of breakdown of some of the, you know, inter-fund transfers this afternoon on that.
Motion.
Before we make a motion, is, is, and I should have looked at this myself, but is item H on the consent agenda under the current docket of claims? For the St. John's?
No, that's, that's actually us requesting reimbursement.
Okay.
It's not a payment.
Not a payment, all right.
That's a request for cash.
You have a motion, Councilman Seal, you have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Reed, any discussion?
Utility authority, it was like a hundred and six thousand this month, is, is that gonna be normal now or something? Seemed like it's an increase from eighty-something to ninety.
Usually ninety-four, ninety-six.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, now it's seen a hundred and six or so this time, so.
Rain event, I think you know rain. Yeah, I'm just, right.
Nothing out there, ordinary.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I said, oh, two, so, okay.
Again, all right, okay, the motion, I'm sorry, vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Motion to approve docket of claims twenty-three dash zero zero nine, dated February twenty-three.
Motion.
Try to, yes.
I didn't hear you, microphone's not on.
Jeremy, keep the microphones on.
Councilman Reed has accused himself.
Leave your microphone on, quit playing.
Again, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Motion.
Mr. Councilman Salvo.
Second.
Second, Councilman Reed, discussion, with the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six zero. And let there act like, Councilman Reed has re-entered the room, next item up.
Motion to approve docket of claims twenty-three dash ten, dated February twenty-three, twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred, twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion.
Motion, Councilman Reed, second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Salvo, with the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries seven zero. All right, next item's a consent agenda.
On the Hurricane Zeta, why are we keeping that going? What are we having received?
We still have emergency, I mean, we still have repairs going on for Zeta, there's a bunch of moving, PWs out there.
This is just a question, mayor, maybe, police chief, just, I'm just out of curiosity, the motion to authorize unmarked police vehicles? So, okay.
That's a normal thing we do.
Every, how, I mean, is it?
It's more of a formality, we're not adding any new vehicles, it's what we have today, that was one of my questions originally when we got it.
Okay.
Like, I think it was two weeks ago, it was right before the meeting, we, we didn't put it on at this last minute, but it's not adding any new ones, it's more of the formality that the council has to take action to officially declare these marked vehicles.
Got you, okay, yeah.
Chief, I mean, if there's anything else.
That's what I was wanting, okay. All right, thank you.
Motion approved consent agenda.
Motion, my Councilman Reed, second, my Councilman Hoffman, any discussion with the motion?
Aye.
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 All right.
Aye, motion carries seven zero. Next item up is minutes approval for city council, first regular meeting, February seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Motion approved, no changes required, just getting pretty good at those things.
Second, my Councilman Hoffman, with the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six zero, Councilman Reed is standing.
Reed is standing.
We have motion up.
He built a new house?
Let's see, Ms. Smith, anything in the attorney report?
Not unless one of you has something for me.
Counsel, we're good. All right, next time, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, my Councilman Salvo, second, my Councilman Reed, with the motion.
Aye.
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 Gary, since you're here, y'all be needing, need to adjourn.
Aye.